Good afternoon, everyone, and I would like to welcome you and open up our Middlesex County Council Meeting for Tuesday, December the 13th. We acknowledge that the land we stand upon today is the traditional territory of the Atawandarin, Anishinaabe, Haudenosaunee, and Lenawapewak peoples who have longstanding relationships to the land, water, and region of southwestern Ontario. The local First Nation communities of this area include Chipewas of the Thames First Nation, Oneida Nation of the Thames First Nation, and Muncie Delaware Nation. The Middlesex County building is on a land within the areas of Treaties 21 and 29, and the London Township Treaty 6. We value the significant contributions both in the past and the present of local and regional First Nations of Turtle Island. We acknowledge historic and ongoing injustices that Indigenous peoples endure in Canada, and we affirm our commitment to honoring Indigenous voices, nations, and cultures, and to moving forward in the spirit of reconciliation and respect. So today is a good day. While we were sworn in last week, we have spent many hours together through orientation sessions. Today is the day that the hard work really begins. As this new term of council takes on, I want to remind you that we are here around this horseshoe because of the trust that our residents have placed in us. It is a trust that we cannot take lightly. The work that we take on, the decisions we make as councillors of Middlesex County, will impact our residents and businesses on a daily basis. Now, we may not always agree. Each one of our opinions are valued, and I for one look forward to hearing from each one of you at this table. We all have so much to learn from one another. Together, throughout thoughtful discussions and respectful debate, we will continue to move Middlesex forward. So I can see that you are all ready, so let's get to work. With that, I will ask if there is any disclosure of pecuniary interest? Seeing none, the minutes from November 14th you've been able to review, was there any business arising from those minutes? And then I would ask, after, I know that you've all reviewed the minutes from November 14th, and if nothing has to be amended, I would ask for a mover and a seconder to approve those minutes of November 14th as presented. Councillor Mayhew and Councillor Smybert? All in favor? And that's carried. We do not have any deputations tonight, and at this time, I would ask if there are any inquiries or notices of motion? Councillor Grantham?
I just need you to put your mic on.
Thank you, Madam Warden, thank you very much for that. We've had a number of inquiries in my municipality, both within the town of Strathroy and in the town of Melbourne regarding traffic and traffic control and lights and different things. I just wanted it to be possible to bring a motion for information to have a report done on traffic control.
Okay, what I might do is hand this over to either the county engineer or our CAO. I think that there's a plan for some education and visiting, visioning sessions for council on those topics. It wouldn't be appropriate just to bring the motion to the floor on that, but certainly we can have a small discussion on what staff is planning on how to educate council on those.
That's fine, Madam Warden.
Yeah, so we can definitely take that as direction. We have it on our calendar for the morning before the January council meeting. And so we're also looking, so that would be a vision session. Again, these are education sessions, they're not decision-making sessions. So the goal of that session would be to present you with a wealth of knowledge around intersections on highways from an engineering perspective, legal, insurance, and an enforcement perspective. Present all that information to you and then have, if there's any motions or recommendations about direction from council, they would come out at the next meeting or at a future meeting could be. So we do have that intention for that January meeting. The other thing we're looking for is if there's other topics. Right now, we're leaning towards doing one on planning process, but if there's other topics that are front of mind for you that you'd like to see us cover in that vision session, please let me know. We're more than happy to do that. And I'm anticipating that we're going to be together that whole morning just talking about two topics, but mostly about intersections. And I think it'll be everything you wanted to know about intersections and more whenever we're done with a variety of speakers on that January day. So we definitely take that as direction, and it'll happen in that January meeting.
Thank you. Is that okay, Councillor Grantham? You're comfortable with that?
That's fine, Warden, thank you very much.
Thank you. So we'll move right into, were there any other inquiries? Okay, then we'll move right into reports, and the first one we've got is from Chief Neil Roberts, and it's on offload nurses.
Thank you, Madam Warden. Good afternoon, council. Through you, Madam Warden. So the report that's before council today is to provide you with an update on the offload nurse report. So a bit of background, offload delays actually came as a result of SARS-1 back in early 2003, and it was a bit of a unfortunate byproduct where we saw paramedics that would typically arrive in an emergency department and transfer their patients immediately over to emergency department stretcher. But coming out of SARS, we saw access and flow issues, not only in the emergency department, but certainly throughout the hospital. And offloads continued throughout, and in 2008, 2009, the province of Ontario introduced dedicated offload nurse funding. So that's putting an offload nurse in the emergency department to receive patients from paramedics when they were backlogged. This introduction of this program back in 2008, 9 was meant to be a temporary fix so that the province could look at the long-term solution to it. So here we are in 2022, coming out of COVID, which is a form of SARS, and what we saw was an increased strain on hospital systems and an increased strain on offload delays. And typically, an offload delay occurs when a paramedic arrives with their patient in the emergency department, and after 30 minutes, the offload delay clock starts. So there's a 30-minute grace period. Anything after 30 minutes is what we're clocking or what we're recording as an offload delay or lost time in the emergency department. And that offload clock stops as soon as the patient is accepted by the hospital and placed into their bed. That's what we refer to as a transfer of care. Again, all that's documented and recorded. Certainly, what we are seeing of late is that our offloads are increasing in volume, meaning numbers, and in the amount of time. So it's not unusual now to see offloads in 12 hours up to 19 hours. So we're actually timing out a full crew that starts at 7:00 AM in the morning, and the oncoming crew at 7:00 PM at night is actually taking over the care for that patient that remains in the emergency department and untransferred. And so obviously, this is impacting services, it's impacting staff, and is causing to a lot of areas. For the last couple of years, our offload nurse program, which will come to council, provide, and it's 100% funded, so it's not from your tax levy. And we are provided with funding for 16 hours per site. So at the university site, we have 16 hours per day, it's 7:00 AM till 11:00 PM, and the same at the Victoria campus. We have asked for additional funding and for additional hours to make that 24 hours a day because often from 11:00 PM until 7:00 AM is when we have no offload nurse and our system continues to be strained because there is no ability to transfer to the hospital to the offload nurse. Council may remember that as part of the 2223 budget, the province announced an additional $7 million in offload nurse funding, so taking it from a $60 million a year funding pot to $23 million a year. Middlesex London Paramedic Service has applied twice for an additional funds to take us from 16 hours a day to 24 hours a day. To date, that funding request remains with the ministry, and we still do not have any answers on that, and we have not extended or worked with LHSC to extend it. Speaking of LHSC, and Warden will know because she started early on the dialogue with regards to LHSC and with CAO Rayburn and the city about a closer working relationship with London Health Sciences to try and address in real-time solutions between London Health Sciences, the city, the county, and Middlesex London Paramedic Service. And we have and continue to have an excellent working relationship with London Health Sciences. The reality is their emergency department is crowded, it is strained, and what's above the emergency department, which is often the problem, in other words, admitted patients in the emergency department cannot move up to their admitted bed because there are no beds or that they're not readily available, so everything backlogs. So we continue again with our system, and I know Deputy Chief Bennett's with us. We will do, and you'll hear this from time to time, doubling up. So that's where we take, you know, a paramedic crews are two paramedics. So both those paramedics will look after multiple patients in the emergency department so we can try and free other vehicles as well. So we're looking at different solutions, different ways. But the reality is, we certainly could use the additional funds to go to 24 hours a day. But we're also advocating, as the warden has done in the past in county council, the longer permanent solution to addressing this and eventually eliminating offload delays as well. So from a high level, that's the overview. Obviously, the report's more detailed, but Madam Warden, I'll pass it back to you in case council has any questions.
Okay, great. Thank you for that update. Chief, any questions or comments from council on the report? Discussion points? This is a report that has come back a number of times over the years and is sadly often the same. Councillor Rob?
Thank you. Through the warden, as you said, we've been talking about this for a long time and about the increased 24-hour nursing coverage. And I'm wondering, I would like to make a motion instead of just receiving this report to pass a resolution in support of, for council to support this request, to see if council's input on this and support of this will help to move this along. So I would make a motion to have a resolution to support this.
Thank you. One thing to consider is that we do have a request into the Ministry of Health for the upcoming Roma Conference, which is at the end of January. And this is one of the topics that I believe we submitted to speak to. So this, that motion actually, Councillor Rob, could be helpful. And I'm wondering if we can include maybe reference to Roma in that?
Yes, I think that'd be a great idea. Thank you, Warden.
And as it turns out, perhaps maybe the clerk might have one, a motion written.
So I'll read that out. It would be Vet Council for the County of Middlesex supports Middlesex London Paramedic Services business case submitted to the Ministry of Health for increased funding to provide staffing for the dedicated offload nurse program 24 hours per day at London Health Sciences Centre Emergency Departments, and that the warden and chief MLPs include the request for increased funding and a permanent solution for the dedicated offload nurse program as part of the county's delegation to the Minister of Health at the Rural Ontario Municipal Association Conference in January 2023.
So Councillor Rob, if you're comfortable with that wording, you're okay to move that?
Yes, I am. Thank you.
So moved by Councillor Rob, a seconder, Councillor DeVet. Is there discussion on the motion that's been presented now that you have the wording and an understanding of what the request is? Seeing none, then all, oh, Councillor DeVet?
I would just echo the Councillor Rob's remarks. This is an integrated, I mean, we need an integrated solution to this, and all the pieces need to be there. So to the extent that we can free up paramedic time, it impacts mental health, it affects efficiency, our capital costs as far as additional units and all of that, so we have to start somewhere. Thank you.
Thank you. Again, if there's no further comments, then all in favor of that motion. And that's carried. Okay, moving on to the next, again, staying with MLPs. This is the system status report. And Chief, are you delivering this report or is Commander Bennett?
I'm going to start, Madam Warden, and then as we get into questions, wherever we need to, we'll follow up.
Thank you.
So through you, Madam Warden, to council. So this is a system status update on our system as well, and we often provide updates to county council to let you know how the system is performing, so it is an established practice. And really, it's to keep you informed of system performances and challenges. And certainly, over the last 10 years, we continue to see increases in demand at an average rate of 5.58 or almost just under 6% per year in growth. In 2022, so from January 1st to October 31st this year, Middlesex London Paramedic Service experienced a 9% growth, and that's call volume. So that's not offloads itself. So we're seeing more calls coming in to our system than we projected and more than we expected, and that's over 2021. County council may be aware that recently ORH, who is a consultant, was hired to complete a strategic plan. In that plan, they forecasted a 10% increase over five years, so on average, a 2% increase. But as I said earlier, this year alone, we're at 9%. So we're almost in one year matching what was projected over a five-year period. So the growth is far beyond what the projections were, what we projected even internally in seeing. And again, this is coming out of COVID and is a byproduct of COVID as well, and we're seeing it in other healthcare aspects. The rapid increase further highlights the importance of implementing the recommendations that were contained in that plan, which again, we will provide further updates to county council. But the rapid growth that we're seeing now, only Middlesex County and the city, is outpacing. Certainly, when you look at it, the root cause as well that adds further strain is increased call volume. And couple that with the offload delays and it creates what I often referred to in the past as the perfect storm. And so we have not only increased strain on our 911 responses, but also on vehicles that are kept in the emergency longer than necessary and creating what we call a code zero position. So when calls coming, come in, we have no available vehicles to respond. And so our dispatch, which is operated by the Ministry of Health, will start dispatching units from Elgin County, Oxford County, Huron County, other counties around us, Perth County. We've had vehicles from Perth County responding into the city on an emergency call as well. So this creates additional pressures. And certainly, one of the areas that we look at doing as well, as I said earlier, is doubling up on patients where we're in offload to try and clear vehicles. We certainly, again, earlier this year at AML, provided a pilot proposal to the Minister of Health on models of care. And again, Warden was there along with past Warden as well on this. And certainly, one of the areas that we are trying to address is the strain on our system. And right now, every call coming into our dispatch center requires a transporting ambulance to respond. And by law, that transporting ambulance has to go to an emergency department, which is already overstrained. So the pilot that was proposed, and it was deemed an early adopter with models of care so that would allow paramedics to treat and refer. In summary, it would be a single paramedic in a Tahoe or an SUV would respond to a lower acuity call. So not a lights or sirens call, but a call that was being held. And at times, we've had upwards of 16 calls in that queue at the same time. And what we asked the minister was to allow us to send a single paramedic to take a call out of the queue, respond to the call, assess the patient at their residence or wherever they are, treat them at the residence. If they were required to be transported in, we'd go to emerge. But if they didn't, we'd actually transfer care over to a community paramedic in real time. So stopping the transport, providing the care over to a community paramedic who would then take over the care, deal with the patient overnight, and that community paramedic would also be working alongside of a physician on a patch phone to ensure that the patient was properly cared for, better cared for in the community. So often, you'll hear the phrase, "right patient at the right time receiving the right care", and that's really the model of care that we promoted to the minister. And shortly thereafter, a couple of days after that at AML, the minister announced models of care. Our proposal went into the minister and to date has not been approved. My understanding is it is with their legal department. But we are ready to go and deploy this model. Middlesex Paramedic Service has a history of being an early adopter on models of care. The earliest one would have been the treat, sorry, the alternative destination to the CMHA site on Huron Street. So we took lower acuity mental health patients instead of to the emergency department. We transported them to the Huron Street site, where our discharge time is roughly five or 10 minutes versus sitting in the emergency for hours and hours and hours. So this was good care for the right patient at the right time, and it actually allowed us to return vehicles back to the system. And the minister often recognizes this Middlesex London pilot as one of the flagships to the new care that paramedics can provide. The other on models of care, just to give council a quick high level. So models of care are treat and refer, which we talked about, treat and release. So that's when a paramedic will treat you on scene and release you on scene. In other words, not transport you, but basically suggests you follow up with your family physician or maybe an urgent care if you need it. The other models of care, which is what we have been doing with the CMHA, is transporting patients to alternative destinations. Not every patient requires to go to an emergency department that's already overcrowded and overstrained. And they can go, as we said, to a mental health pilot or a site such as Huron Street. We could refer them over to a crisis mental health team that's on the street as well. We could potentially take them to an urgent care center or to a walk-in clinic or refer them back to their primary care physician. So again, it's trying to be innovative, ensuring the patient's receiving the right care at the right time. And certainly, we believe that this, this model, this early adopter is one of the areas. Council, in your report, you'll also see, as we talked earlier about the offload increase as well as our call volume as well. So this is about trying to look at ways of creating efficiencies, effectiveness, and doing, you know, as the minister and both the premier both said, is we can't continue to do what we've always been doing. It's not working. I'll wholeheartedly agree with that. It's time for change, and certainly, Middlesex Council has led with that. So that's a bit of a high-level overview, but Madam Warden, I'm happy to take questions or Deputy Chief as well.
Thank you, Chief. Questions or comments on this? This is, there is a lot of information in this report to unpack. But again, these are discussions that you will become more familiar with. It's something that the chief often brings back. And I would certainly confirm what the chief says with Middlesex County and MLPs certainly being leaders when it comes to trying to find efficiencies and being part of the solution to the healthcare crisis that's in front of us. So any conversation or comments? Councillor Maguire?
Thank you, Madam Warden. So through you, Madam Warden, to the chief, just a question. You reference in the report that the FRU could refer them to an on-duty community paramedic. Do we currently have an on-duty community paramedic there? Or is that another position that would need to be created? Thank you.
Through you, Madam Warden, to the councillor, we currently have 24 hours a day, seven days a week, community paramedics. So, and especially at nights, that's when we often see our call volume increasing, and often, the community paramedics have a lighter workload with respect to patients. So we believe there is an opportunity there to capitalize on those resources and certainly better utilize them and allow community paramedics to do what they do so well, and that's look after patients in the community.
Councillor DeVet?
Thank you, Warden, through you to the chief and his staff. I just wanted to say that every time you come back with another idea and another approach to a problem, I have to sit here and smile because it's really, this isn't a single solution problem. It's got a lot of levels with a lot of players, with a lot of different acts and priorities and all that whole deck of cards to play with, who has jurisdiction and on so on and so forth. But I'm really always encouraged to hear your reports because to me, it looks like a sort of systems thinking and an integrative approach. What can we do here? What we do here? We, and you can't even control the other pieces. It would be really encouraging if at some Roma meeting, the Minister of Health would sit down and say, "we all need to sit down at the table, take a look at this, and figure out what cascades, what doesn't, who owns what, what we need to change so that ownership isn't so black and white that you can't be effective." The bottom line here is we've got hospitals that are bursting at the seams. The community paramedic medicine piece is important, yeah, but there's still a whole bunch of people that think going to the emergency department for anything that ails them. And I'm not saying that people don't have doctors and their children are sick and they can't get Tylenol. There's all kinds of precipitating factors, but the point is that I see stuff happening here, and I'm not sure I see a lot happening in other places. So I just want to express our thanks and gratitude for what you're doing because, I mean, we need to keep plugging at this if we're going to make it successful. So thank you.
Councillor Grantham?
Yeah, Madam Warden, through you to the chief. The two sets of numbers you presented, the call volume and the offloading, and setting aside the rapid growth of population, how do we stack up against others in the province? Are we more or less, when it comes to those two sets of numbers?
Through you, Madam Warden, to the councillor. So I would, I don't have the exact comparatives, but I would tell you, my colleagues, my other chiefs around the province, especially Hamilton, Peel, Ottawa, other areas, Essex. We're all dealing with volume that's gone through the roof, offloads that have gone through the roof as well. And I think just following up with Deputy Warden DeVet's comments as well. Paramedic services in our dispatch are the entry point to Ontario's healthcare system. So the absence of primary care or obviously the challenges with that, the default is to call 911, is to call paramedics, and that's what we're seeing here. And that's why where we have community paramedics and early adopters that can better channel those calls to the right resource in the community. Because really, at the end of the day, if you can't see your primary care, you can't get an urgent care, you're going to emerge, you're going to call 911. And that's why we're seeing the increased volumes, not only in London, like I said, all throughout the province and actually throughout Canada and through the world. This is a post-COVID, coming out of COVID, what we're seeing. And obviously, you know, council is hearing that we're in the, what I call the tripledemic or what's being referred to as the tripledemic right now. So obviously, COVID, the flu, colds, as well as RSV. And RSV just isn't for pediatric patients, and we're dealing with that right now. But it also affects adults as well. It's a very strong and very difficult virus. So that in itself is adding further pressure and, you know, extenuating or extended pressures on the healthcare system and on us as well.
Follow-up or anything?
No, that's fine, Warden. Thank you very much.
Bill?
I just wanted to take a crack at Colin's question because I think there's two ways to think about it, and Neil answered it in the general, which was kind of the way the question was asked. And I think across, what my observation and talking to my colleagues, my observation is across the province, everybody's featuring the same trend lines. I think the places that Neil mentioned, though, he mentioned Ottawa, he mentioned Peel, he mentioned Windsor, he mentioned London, those are all primary care centers, and primary care centers have seen the trend line go hockey stick style, whereas other places may have seen sort of a more gradual increase. We are seeing hockey stick style increases beyond what our consultants could predict, beyond what we could predict. And a lot of that has to do with just the massive offload delays that we are experiencing in our primary care centers. So I think I'm, I want to give you that caution because you might ask Huron, for example, what they're experiencing. And they'll say, "oh, yeah, we're trending in those same directions." But you go to Hamilton and you go to Ottawa, those are where you're hearing the stories from those primary care centers of where it's just getting to the point of being unmanageable, the charts that we're showing you, and you're going to hear that from Peel and from Essex and us.
Any other comments or questions, discussion? Councillor Rob? Counselor Rob?
Thank you, Warden. Once again, much like the last report. One thing about this report, it's a, it is one step of a real solution, as Counselor Devit said, to the problem that we have in our community paramedicine. They've been doing a great job already and this would be an extension to it. So once again, I would ask, I would make a motion for a resolution for us to support this, to see if we can't get help to get this approved.
And would the clerk have something on hand?
I do. So that council for the county of Middlesex supports Middlesex London Paramedic Services business case submitted to the Ministry of Health for implementing the early adopter proposal for a treat and refer program as part of the models of care and as tabled at the 2022 AMO conference with the Minister of Health. And that the Warden and Chief MLPs include the request for approval to launch the early adopter program for treat and refer within the Middlesex London Paramedic Service Program as part of the county's delegation to the Minister of Health at the Rural Ontario Municipal Association Conference in January 2023.
You're comfortable with that, Counselor Rob?
Yes, I am. And just comment to that, that I want to commend the the chief and the whole department for continuing and pushing this through. This is an important piece for for us going forward.
Thank you. So moved by Counselor Rob and just need a sec, second or counselor clerk? Any other further discussion or comment on that? And all in favor? And that's carried. Thanks again, Chief. And I'll just echo what Counselor Rob said. Certainly being part of those discussions at AMO in the summer, the ministry is certainly interested. And they certainly gave us every indication that they were supportive of the pilot. So kudos to not letting up on that. I think the more that we put the pressure on them, I think we'll start to see results and and the approval of that. Okay. And sticking with MLPs, this is the 2023 draft budget, but I'm going to turn it over to Bill.
Thank you. I have the unenviable task of trying to pronounce unenviable after lunch, but also of at your very first meeting, explaining to you the timelines and key questions around the most complicated budget probably that you're going to see. And it's very complicated for a lot of different reasons. We're going to get into it. I also will tell you that I changed this presentation a little bit from what was in your binder based upon some of the questions I received over the last week. So I tried to tackle those questions head on. So Paul, let's go through the first question. This is one I received from a few people recently. Why is the city of London, London considering the 2023 land ambulance budget prior to it being considered by any governance body at the county? So go ahead, Paul. So it's, it's really complex, the whole budget process for, for the, for the land ambulance. And it's complex for a number of reasons. There are three funding partners, the province, the city and the county. And of particular interest to that question that was asked, it's that there's so many different budget cycles. The county has its budget cycle. The province has a budget cycle and the city has a budget cycle and all are very off. What I mean by that is there's overlap, but not much overlap. For example, there's different budget approaches. The city uses a four-year budget cycle with annual updates. Their annual update process starts in late August, early September. The county uses an annual budget process that starts in December but ends in March. And the province uses a retroactive budget process that starts sometime when their provincial budget is established at the end of their fiscal year. They have a different fiscal year than us, but isn't really announced on the ambulance side until August and sometimes later than August. So when I talk about this being complex, it's because we have so many different budget cycles with so many different budgetary demands. And so what I want to do today is just walk you through the process for the budget. This, I'm going to talk more about the process for the budget than the budget itself. We have time for the budget. We have, you know, a couple of months to sort of figure all that out. But I want to make sure you understand this complexity of this budget. So Paul, we'll move on to the next slide. This is our process for the city. And we'll get you this presentation, the updated one, so you have it. But this process, as you can see, starts in September where we start sending information to the city about our draft administrative budget. Now, what's a draft administrative budget? That is a budget that is really created by Neil, myself, his senior leadership team and Cindy. That's it. That's a draft administrative budget. It hasn't had one eye on it by anybody that matters politically on the governance side at that point. And why do we do it that way? We do it that way for a lot of different reasons. It's a good process for us to get started and look at our trend lines at that time period. But also it's because in December, the city goes forward with their draft budget. And they need some sort of a placeholder to put in there. And so we give them a placeholder that's a draft administrative budget. But it doesn't really even get seen by anybody on our side until the authority board looks at it in January. So we have a date set in January for the, a couple of dates set in January for the authority board to look at it. That's the first time any governance eyes are going to set sight on this budget. Then it gets reviewed by the budget committee here in January and February, and then finally in March, it gets approved by county council. Now you can see just how much later our process starts from the city of London's process and that often causes heartburn. But we do our best to try and get them as much information as possible. Now, in a perfect world, we would, we'll move forward, Paul, one slide. In a perfect world, what we would do is we would give them an allocation so they know how much to actually budget for. But unfortunately, we can't do that. All we can do is give them what we think our estimates are going to be. But there's a huge difference between our estimates and what would go into their allocation because there's a formula involved in an allocation. So when you hear things in the paper about the cost of something going up, that's not the cost of something going up that we provided them. The costs are rising for ambulance, as you know, but that's not the the cost number. That's an estimate of what we're going to spend. It has nothing to do with the municipal allocation, the provincial allocation or the county allocation. So we have to remember that there's estimates, there's projected cost distribution, which we do, we we give them what we think their costs are going to be in the summertime. After we've given them the estimates that we have, and we keep updating the city in this process. Of course, we talked to them in December, we talked to them in September. We, once we get through the authority board, we'll talk to them again, say we're getting closer to final budget numbers. But it's not the first look they really get at a sort of a real number is in the summer when we give them cost distribution numbers. And then the actual costs are what we do at the end, which are reconciliation at the end of the year when we know everything. So the reason it's has to be done that way where normally I could say, hey, the planning budget is up X amount. Therefore, the cost to the county is going to be up X amount. It's not a one-to-one relationship because this funding formula is much more complicated than just a straight budget. As you can see, the costs are distributed based upon weighted assessment and also actual cost basis. What that means is where calls originate from. So that's call volume in each municipality. So we settle up with the city on that when we have that information in July. But really, it's not till the end of the year that we do the final reconciliation. And that's frustrating. I mean, if you're trying to do a four-year budget or if you're trying to set your budget in December for the following year, it's tough whenever we, we just don't have the information to provide them with an allocation. We can only give them estimates of what their, the budget increase is going to be. So that's what you're hearing about in the paper right now. You're hearing about the budget estimates and Paul will move one slide forward. There's other complexities as well, and I just, I want this to be in your brain when you're thinking about the budget going forward. The Ministry of Health provides support for the land ambulance system. Now you'll see on all their websites that it's 50%. The problem is that that's not set in stone. That's not legislatively set in stone. That's a grant. The province makes that very clear. And why does that matter? It means because I can't give county council, I can't give city council any indication of what their allocation is until I know what the province is going to provide us. It could change every time. If I could count on that number being the same every time, at least then I would have more certainty in telling county council, here's what you're going to have to pay in a city, what you're going to have to pay. Unfortunately, we don't get that letter until September. And there has been, there has been in the past, some indication that we have a what they call a one-year lag of provincial funding. And so what that means is the costs we're incurring in 2023, the the new costs, the province won't participate in those until the 2024 budget. So anything that's new, a new ambulance goes on, those 100% municipal costs until the following year. And then the province will contribute their 50%. As a result of that one-year lag, it's about a 43% amount of provincial funding because of the delay. And the county and the city have to pick up the remaining 57%. It doesn't work out the 50%. The other thing I was going to mention about this is that that I said it's not set in stone several times, what the province is going to provide. In fact, there was some saber rattling early on with the provincial government that they might go to a two-year lag. I can't even begin to tell you what that would do to the contribution, the allocation costs for the county and the city. That 43% number would drop dramatically if we went to a two-year lag on provincial funding. And so again, it's pretty evident to you by now, I think, why we can't give a number with certainty until well after we hear from the province next September about this year's budget. The other thing that you'll notice is that that formula had assessment information. Again, assessment information for the previous year is not available in December. I wish it was. But that would be crystal ball. Instead, that information generally gets to us in the first quarter, maybe the beginning of the second quarter, how assessment has changed. And again, I need that number to be able to provide a certainty number to the city in terms of what their costs are going to be. Finally, call volume information. We don't really get call volume information until well into the first quarter because you have to look backwards again. Not easy whenever you're being asked what our costs are going to be in December and you can't even have one of your factors until the first quarter of the following year. So there's a massive difference between allocation budget and reconciliation. And these all add complexities to this already very large and complicated budget. Paul, let's keep going. This is just a little overview of what we talked about already. The draft budget estimate is a little over 61 million. And that's about a 17.85% overall draft budget increase. About nine and a little bit million over 2022. We, the way the administrative draft budget is done, it's zero-based. We start with nothing in the columns and then work or build the budget up from there, seeking efficiencies. And I think several counselors have commented about our efforts every year to try and seek those efficiencies. And and that's the way we go about it on our side between Cindy, Neil, myself and the rest of the MLPs team. Okay, Paul. This was another question that came up often was what are the main drivers of land ambulance budget increases? Now, Paul, go ahead and we'll just take a look at this first chart. That's the hockey stick Colin I was talking about. This is something that, so that's offload delays. And I often get criticized with, folks will say, well, how come you didn't see this coming? No one in the province saw this coming. No one in, no one in the world saw offload delays the way they are coming. I guarantee you, not like this. When you have a steady state, we've had a steady state in growth of offload delays, yes, but not this hockey stick style. And don't forget that number that Neil showed you on offload delays is only till the end of November. We still have all of December to factor into there. And I'm going to get and need a new piece of paper to get the endpoint for where that is going to go. That is a massive, massive impact on our budget. And if we move forward and look at call demand increase, again, that started to hockey stick a little bit too. You can see that again, we, when we, when we do the four-year budgeting process, we talk about trend lines. You can see, look at if you were looking at a four-year budget on that first level of of that chart. Pretty steady, pretty regular growth. And then look what happened. Just the call demand went through the roof. Now that's a function of a lot of things. We can talk about population. We can talk about the things Neil talked about coming out of nine 11. This is the fastest growing census region according to the to stats can. So I mean, you're going to see increased population growth. You should expect to see call demand increase. But this is unprecedented. We've never, I don't think in Neil's career or my career, we've been at this a long time. I don't think we've seen anything like this over a two or three year period. Okay, Paul. Other, other system pressures that are dramatically increasing the budget are just the complexity of calls. For those of you that haven't been on a ride along or don't know just how complex calls are now compared to where they were 10 years ago. As some supports come out of the way in terms of mental health or addiction challenges or any of those other areas, 911 ambulance services stepped into that and that is made the complexity of the calls significantly, significantly different than they were 10 years ago. Offload delays, we talked about inflation and supply chain challenges. We have gas in our vehicles the same way everybody else does. We have challenges getting certain types of equipment because of all the same challenges everybody else does. We can talk in more detail later about the ombudsman report and the requirements that we now have as a result of that ombudsman's report. Sanctioned and unsanctioned events, this is something else. It's grown to the point of where you have big events. And we don't think about it, like the city, for example, will have world figure skating championships or a memorial cup or or an unsanctioned event like, like that happens up at Western or some other, and and those are huge pressures on our system that we didn't have just 10 years ago. I mentioned population growth, vehicle liability insurance costs, those are definitely up. Paul, what else we got? We got the lag from the Ministry of Health, training costs. This is something that we often forget about. All those new paramedics that we're putting on the road, they have new vehicle requirements. We have new training requirements. And then there's all the medical supplies and equipment to support them. We talk about station rents. That's another thing that commercially our station rents are rising. Our ability to create new stations, the cost of doing that is rising, building new stations is rising. We have a master plan that I think some of you have seen, and if you haven't all seen it, we'll get your copies of it, but it makes a number of recommendations. Some of those Neil has talked about already today. Those are in there. Some of those are in there, I should say. And then finally, one that's near and dear to my heart, and also I think the warden as well, is that with with what our paramedics have been struggling through, not only offload delays, but COVID and constant demand on the system that it's a pressure cooker that they're, that they're in. The support services for employees has to rise commensurately and and frankly, we've done a bad job of that. For, for a decade, I would say the system pressures remain relatively stable. And that's one thing, that's, that's one thing in terms of support costs. But as the system pressures have increased so dramatically, we haven't ramped up behind that, the employee support services. And that is already starting to be a drag on our system as a whole. And I think it will just get worse if we don't ramp up those support services. So you're going to hear me talk a lot about that over the next little while because I think it's an area we're definitely weak in. And this is a chart that's hard to read on that screen, but I'll just tell you what it says. It basically says almost all of our costs are in operational wages and and benefits is what you'd expect. It's labor. And then after that, it's vehicles and and really you can see just a huge, that big blue on your screen, that big bluish part of the chart is, I think it's at, say, 72 or 77, 72. That's a pretty massive part of this budget that is, is about wages and benefits. So people are our greatest strength. They're also our greatest cost driver. The more paramedics that we put out there and more vehicles we put out there, that that's where our costs go. And so, Paul, what else we have? Oh, some more complications that make this budget challenging for you to to get your head around. And that is, we have three other budgets that are 100% funded. That's not included in that 61 million. I don't think I'm going to get them all, but one would be community paramedicine. That's 100% funded by the province. The other one is the prenatal, what's that one called Neil, the?
It's the neonatal intensive care and pediatric intensive care transport unit.
See, that's why I had him say it. And then the other one would be the offload delay nurse, I assume, right now.
Yes, offload, NQ, pediatric, community paramedic.
Yeah, yeah, that's it. Those are the three. So we have three other budgets that aren't even included in that 61 million we told you about and and we'll talk more about those as we get to the county budget process. But it's not very often that I come to you and say, hey, here's a department with four different budgets with three different funders, with three different cycles, with four different four different inputs required to look at allocations that all come over a one-year period at different times. That's nuts. That doesn't happen very often in municipal government, but that's what this budget um relies upon is that information. So this is kind of getting at Colin's question. Service demand increases are comparable to comparable ambulance services. You see how I use comparable twice? I don't think that I would compare us to Huron. I don't think, but I would certainly compare us to Hamilton. I'd certainly compare us to sort of the Waterloo's of the region. Um, you know, places that are more of that primary care centers and and Ottawa, big centers like that. I really like Hamilton as a comparator because they have a nice mix of small urban and large urban in Hamilton and a large geographic area. It it reminds me a lot of Middlesex uh from that respect. The, the numbers actually show that Simcoe County, um, just a little north of Toronto are, is closest in size and complexity to us. It's another great comparator in Simcoe County. So we'll start showing you some of those numbers, Colin, as well as we go through the budget process. Another complication that often comes up this time of year is we won't pick on any one department, but it's what I call apples to oranges. And most people would call apples to oranges. So I'll get a call from a newspaper person or some media person. And they'll ask me the question. They'll say, Bill, the ambulance budget is X and some other city emergency department is Y. And yours is double theirs. And I'll say, okay, do you know that when, what our budget is a total gross cost budget? That means all of our costs are in there. And the challenge we often have is that for other services that are, we're compared to um, that aren't other ambulance services. They don't include capital in there. So our budget, when we give it to the city, it includes all of our capital costs. Um, we have to pay taxes. Um, some other ser, other services don't have to pay taxes for the facility. Uh, other services get growth funding from the city, and that's taken out before they talk about their percentage increase. So growth funding is like new population money, new assessment money that they get. Other uh services get development charges. We don't get development charges. Um, other services have um land dedication from a planning perspective. We don't get that either. We have to go out and buy a top dollar, I can tell you. Um, we're doing, um, we're trying to do a new station downtown. That's a whole lot easier whenever you have land dedication through the planning process. It's not easy when you have to go out and find a place in a commercial center to build an ambulance station. It's no wonder that our facilities cost more as a result. And then other services that also have a fund for employment increases, wage increases that are netted out before they give that percentage number, and we don't have that. Again, our number that we're given in our budget is a total raw, total cost estimate for what our costs are, and we don't subtract these things before um we provide them and other services do. And then the other complication is we just don't know what's happening politically on the two-year lag. I haven't heard a thing about it for a little while. It doesn't mean that it's gone. And that is the biggest risk factor you have to the budget. If, if you went to a two-year lag, both the city and the county. That would be a bit of a tidal wave that would roll over on a sixty-one million dollar budget. Or, you know, getting closer to seventy million when you count everything in, that would be a bit of a tidal wave. Um, that would certainly have a big impact on the services that we provide here and at the city. Paul, what else we got? Questions? So as I mentioned, um, the goal of this was really to talk just about how some things are the same, how some things are different, the process and, and what are the major drivers? The next time we're going to talk about budget is going to be, um, some of you will see it at the authority. Um, once we get our authority board in place. And then the next time you'll see that is at the budget committee. And then finally, you're going to, all through that process, we're going to be giving you updates on land ambulance budget consistently all the way through to March.
Okay, thank you very much for that overview, Bill. Uh, questions or comments um from council on that? Lots of information. Counselor Rock.
Uh, thank you once again, Warden. Um. I think, Bill, the other thing I would like to see from the paramedic service is we're talking about budget and all the challenges. I, I would like to hear a report from, from Neil or from his team of all the things they do really well. And there's a lot of those. I'm, I'm, I have no problem being a champion, speaking for the, our paramedic service. But I think it should come for this council to hear some of the projects that are, go above and beyond, whether it be the pop-up vaccination bus or or anything else. And I would like to hear a report from paramedic at some point to talk about that.
Thank you. Um, Counselor Rock. I'm looking at the chief and deputy chief, no, just they're writing notes. So I, we're all up with that on the horizon.
We're all excited to do that. That'll be great. Yeah, we'll be ready.
Any other comments or questions? Okay, with that, I would ask for a mover and a seconder to receive that report for information, please. Counselor McGuire and Counselor McMillan. And all in favor? And that is carried. Moving on to new business, um, in front of you, you have a report uh from me and the deputy warden. And that has to do with the appointments to boards and committees for the two thousand and twenty-two to twenty-six term of council. Um, I trust that you've reviewed it. Um, are there any comments or concerns raised from the report in front of you with the recommendations? With that, I would ask for a mover and a seconder um for that the necessary bylaws be introduced at the December thirteenth uh meeting of council to confirm the committee and board appointments as set out in the report. Counselor Brennan and Counselor Smybert. All in favor? And that's carried. Black Bridge Replacement. Chris, over to you.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Warden, a long time coming on this report. Um. We put out for tender the replacement of the Blacks Bridge project, uh which is in North Middlesex on West Corner Drive. Uh, in compliance with the environmental study report that was approved later, earlier, excuse me, in two thousand and twenty-two. Uh, you can see there's a summary uh letter from uh Dylan Consulting, who are our consulting engineers on this project. Uh, we had a number of bidders, uh and we are proposing that the bid from Sierra Bridge be accepted. They were the low bidder. They have not worked in Middlesex County previously, but we have reviewed uh projects in other jurisdictions and talked to staff and other consultants who are involved in those projects. And they come highly recommended. So I'm recommending that their bid in the amount of four million sixty-two thousand five hundred ninety-four dollars and eight cents be accepted.
Okay, thank you, Chris. Questions on this? Then I would ask for a mover and a seconder for the recommended motion in front of you. Counselor Rock and a seconder, Counselor McMillan. All in favor? And that's carried. Okay, Marcy, um, the report on integrity commissioner and closed meeting investigator.
Uh, thank you. So municipalities in Ontario are authorized to appoint an ombudsman, closed meeting investigator and integrity commissioner, who is responsible for administering the council code of conduct, the Municipal Conflict of Interest Act, the Closed Meeting Provisions of the Municipal Act, and investigating decisions made in the course of administration of the municipality. In January two thousand and eighteen, the firm of Independent Resolutions Inc., represented by Mark McDonald, was appointed to this role. Independent Resolutions appointment ended on September thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-two. Prior to the end of the appointment, we issued a request for proposals in accordance with our purchasing policy, but we did not receive any responses. Uh, Mark McDonald is willing to continue in this role on the terms and conditions set out in the agreement attached to Schedule A. Um, that agreement, if approved by council, would take effect on January first, two thousand and twenty-three for a one-year term with a two-year renewal option. The annual retainer would be five thousand dollars with a two hundred dollar per hour investigation rate. And we are recommending approval of the agreement.
Okay, thanks, Marcy. Any comments or questions on this in front of us? Okay, seeing none, you do have a recommended motion in front of you. I'd ask for a mover and a seconder, please. Counselor Grantham and Counselor Mayhew. All in favor? And that's carried. Okay, councillor comments and other business. I actually have one comment to make. Um, and um, this is just more inform, uh as an information piece. Uh, many of you might have received the uh news release from the Middlesex London Health Unit earlier today, um where they announced that the vaccination clinic um at the CareDoc Community Center is closing as of tomorrow. And I just wanted to speak to that. Um, it is, it was a significant part in the success of vaccinations, uh not only across Middlesex County, but um, you know, throughout the region. There was a hundred and twelve thousand, I believe, a hundred and twelve thousand doses were administered out of that location. When it was set up, it was a um joint partnership between the health unit, Middlesex London Paramedic Services, the city, the county, Strathroy CareDoc, and the um um, uh Health Alliance um out there as well. So I just want to congratulate everybody that was involved in that. I had the opportunity to work there in the early days, as did a number of our staff. And um our served volunteers were there as support um until they really got up and running. And as I say, it really was a success story. Uh, so I want to congratulate uh everyone involved. And of course, thank the health unit. Um, initially, um, there was no vaccination presence uh in the county and um through advocating and working with the health unit and being able to uh support um, the labor force with paramedic services, um, we were able to staff that. So um certainly, um, I think it's a good news story that it, that it's um closing. Um, but congratulations and thanks to everybody that was involved in that project. There aren't any other comments, then we'll move on to bylaws. And we have a few in front of us. So bylaw seventy-two zero three, which is a bylaw to approve committee and board appointments for two thousand and twenty-two to two thousand and twenty-six. Seventy-two zero four, a bylaw to appoint members of the M L E M S Authority Board. Seventy-two zero five, a bylaw to appoint a municipal ombudsman, integrity commissioner and closed meeting investigator. And seventy-two zero six, a bylaw to confirm the proceedings of the December thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-two meeting of county council. If I can have a mover and a seconder for those, um, and give those first and second reading, please. Counselor DeVet and Counselor Mayhew. All in favor? That's carried. And a mover and a seconder to give those readings third and final reading. Um, Counselor Clark and Counselor Smybar, Smybert. And all in favor? And that's carried. So now we move into the committee of the whole. Two oh three, this is a new thing since I was warden last, but I need a mover and a seconder uh to convene the committee of the whole at three minutes after two. Counselor Rock and Counselor Grantham. All in favor? And that's carried. So our first report in front of us is from uh Legislative Services, and that's uh information on the weighted vote distribution.
Uh, so this report outlines the weighted vote distribution for this term, as well as the representation on county council for the two thousand and twenty-six to two thousand and thirty term. Uh, in accordance with Middlesex County bylaw number fifty-four sixty-nine. In terms of the weighted vote, votes are allocated to members of council based on the number of electors in their local municipalities. The number of electors are provided to us by the local clerks according to their last revised polling lists. Uh, councillors are entitled to one vote for every one thousand electors or part thereof. There is a chart uh in the report that sets out the number of votes that each of you has. Um, in terms of representation, municipalities with five thousand or more electors are represented by a mayor and a deputy mayor. And based on the number of electors provided, representation for the next term will be the same as this term. Uh, there will be ten members. And so the recommendation is that the report be received for information, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thanks, Marcy. Questions for Marcy on her report? All right, then the motion in front of you. I'd ask for a mover and a seconder for that, please. Counselor Smybert, Counselor Mayhew, all in favor? And that's carried. On to More Homes Built Faster Act and related provincial changes, and there have been a few. So at this point, I'll turn it over to Dirk. Oh. Unless I'm turning it over to Bill.
Well, maybe I'll just, I'll just make one quick co, two, three quick comments. First is, thanks to Abby and Dirk for all their hard work on this. The second is, I'm just happy to see Dirk here today. He, it's, it came thanks to the golden feet of the people of Argentina. Uh, there is no soccer match for the Dutch today. And so I'm pretty sure he would have come up with some illness. If, uh, so I'm really glad he's here uh to present this. And then the final thing I'd say is this. Um, we did this report collectively uh with a very specific lens on it, and I just want you to know what that lens is. We did not uh look at the experiences of local municipalities and try to collate those and put them into a report. This um is the best example I can give you early on about the separation between county planning and local planning. We took a very complete look at this, but only from the county lens. So you might say to yourself, hey, I was in Adelaide Metcalf Council meeting, and we had this concern about how this bill looks to Adelaide Metcalf or to other lower-tier municipalities of our size. You're not going to find those concerns in here unless it's also a shared concern from a county lens perspective. So I just wanted you to know that before Dirk started, and he'll probably reiterate that a few times. But again, thanks for being here, Dirk. Go ahead.
Through the warden, it with a bit of a heavy heart to be here today, but nevertheless. Um, Friday was a little disappointing, but I, first of all, I'd just like to start, and and Bill mentioned briefly, Abby Heddle Jacobs uh is our planner who specializes in policy work. She's doing all the heavy lifting on this project. And so you're going to see her again a number of times before you as county councillors in the coming months. And then you also see her at times with your local planner, when there are things that trickle down to uh each local municipality. So Abby has done a lot of the work, and I wanted her to sort of hear this discussion firsthand. Uh, also, of course, Wayne, a county solicitor, is looking at the legal parts of it, and of course, is available uh for that part of it. But I guess I would just say, uh, as an introduction, um, and for a slide, please. In Bill twenty-three, the, the proposed changes are significant. Uh, and I think that the AMO document that's attached in the agenda is an excellent summary of it, uh sort of at a high level. And also um from a municipal, both county and and upper and lower tier uh perspectives. I do take some comfort in the fact that I do, I think it's likely less significant. Build the impacts of Bill twenty-three are likely, likely less significant in Middlesex County compared to some places, and certainly compared to the GTA. Just with the difference in, for instance, development charges and some of the other things that are going on. So um, you know, the, the stated aim of, of the, of the changes are to increase the supply of housing in Ontario. And and I think I was going to give you a, a quick opinion, and I'd say at best, it's neutral in many respects, and maybe worse. I'm not sure that many of the things that are included in there are actually going to achieve what the province is, is looking for. But nevertheless, it does uh amend a number of statutes, and I won't go into them all. Next slide, please. Um, but um, and and really, they're looking, they're reviewing and consulting on a number of things in addition to Bill twenty-three. And what's perhaps a little different in this particular case than often how the province approaches this is they are uh posting things on the E R O, sort of very general documents, but they're not actually providing all of the details. Bill twenty-three, they provided a draft, um, the draft act, and then, you know, you could review and comment. Things like, uh, they're taking a housing focus review of a place to grow in the provincial policy statement. And they haven't proposed any change wording. They're just uh asking some very general questions. And so we are participating in that, but there's not a lot of details. So, uh, and as you know, the, the devil is in those, in those details. Next slide, please. Um, at the start of this, there were nineteen concurrent postings on the E R O, and a number of them have already closed. Uh, some of them are continuing. And but it has been, it is a top priority for the provincial government. And so the timelines for comments um are, are relatively short. For example, uh, Bill twenty-three, the comment deadline was on a Friday, and on Monday, the, the legislation passed. So there wasn't a lot of time between to digest that. And then the timing with the municipal election and the fact that this was all released the day after the municipal election, it's been difficult for councils, frankly, to uh sort of give the normal review uh and consideration for these changes. But in terms of uh Middlesex County, it's really the development charges, planning act, and the conservation authorities act, I think that are the largest changes. Conservation authorities, uh, the, you know, this provincial government has been focusing conservation authorities on what uh the wording is core mandates of natural hazards. And this legislation would continue to do that and would um sort of curtail the conservation authorities' involvement in land use planning and uh other areas. Next slide, please. sort of curtail the conservation authorities involvement in land use planning and other areas. Next slide, please. And I do have to point out that the highlighted yellow part is no longer completely correct. It is true that January first, two thousand and twenty-three, the C A's, according to the act, are no longer to be involved in land use planning, but they did include some additional wording that it actually is going to occur through regulation to at a later date and that hasn't been released yet. Probably just recognizing that it was too short a timeline for municipalities and for conservation authorities to pivot. So we don't really know what this is going to look like. But it will, you know, if this continues, it effectively will be a downloading of certain authorities to municipalities from conservation authorities, specifically as a relation to natural heritage. We'll have to examine how we deal with that, whether it's through consultants or whether we look at staff or what council wishes are on that. And then there are some provisions that would also allow the province in the future to essentially give hazard authorities to select municipalities in select circumstances where it's related to a planning application. So again, there's no details on what that would look like. So a bit of an unknown yet, please. Next slide. Development charges, and this is an area, of course, and emphasize what Bill said, of course, County of Middlesex doesn't have development charges. So it doesn't affect the county level directly, but it certainly does at the local level and much more so in the G T A where development charges, both at the upper tier and local are at a much greater level. I know in talking to your C A Os, all of your development charge consultants and the three main ones, they are, they're all on top of this. And they've been plugged in this from day one. So you'll, you'll be getting those reports at your local level. But generally it is a reduction in the development charges, particularly the phasing in of, of increases. The removal of housing as a, and also the removal of studies. So in the past, engineering and planning studies could be, D Cs could be collected for that. But the idea of sort of forward planning that, that those are no longer eligible costs. Next slide. And next slide. Ontario Land Tribunal, a number of changes here, not of great significance and also not yet in effect. The province is going to implement this at a later date, but I just highlight the one which really is, it would allow the, the government to prioritize the resolution of specific classes of proceedings and prescribe timelines. And so reading between the lines a little, one can imagine that housing appeals may have higher priority at the O L T and therefore be bumped up and given some sort of truncated or briefer waiting time. Because there is quite a backlog at times with, with the O L T. But again, most of those are not yet in place. Next slide. There are, the, the first draft of Bill twenty-three would have essentially removed the right for citizens to appeal all applications. The government did back, back up from that and only included that for consents and minor variances. And there's some transition provisions in there and our planners and your staff are working on that and we have to revise the notices and what happens. But essentially for those applications, it would no longer be possible for, for instance, for neighbors to appeal. They, when they did back off and then highlighted in yellow there, local official plan amendment. So the county's approval of local official plan amendments in the initial draft would have been not subject to appeal. In my opinion, that would have greatly assisted in the potential for providing housing. So that if municipalities decide on their urban growth boundaries and the county council was to approve it, then it wouldn't be subject to appeal by, for instance, developers that didn't get in or just outside of the boundaries. Unfortunately, from, I believe from my perspective anyways, they did back off of that. And there are some transition provisions and retroactive even to previously appealed applications and whatnot. So we're working on that. Additional residential units, and you've heard about this and, and we spent a lot of time at county council, the planning advisory committee and then county council and some local councils have examined this, the direction from the province a year and a half ago was that additional residential units would be permitted through municipal planning documents. And it was really two plus one, two units in your house plus an additional unit in a, an accessory building in the rear yard and whatnot. Bill twenty-three changes that definition and it, it says it can be two plus one or it can be three plus zero. It can be three units in your house. It also supersedes planning approvals. So it's strictly a building code implementation now. This is, this has received a lot of, you know, kind of general media coverage. The one part that they've missed in the media is that it only applies to parcels of urban residential land. And the act now defines those as areas on full municipal services. So it moves away from that these are to be allowed in all areas, including rural and agricultural areas that to, that these are to be allowed without planning approvals, only in fully serviced municipal areas. And so we've asked the ministry and their initial answer is that's the intention. We've asked for some clarification on that. We're working on that. Because it certainly is a deviation from what we've been doing in our planning documents, which is that that would be allowed in the agricultural area also. So we'll, we'll, again, I'm not sure how that is ultimately going to shake out. But those changes in terms of the building code part of it are already in place now. Next slide. Site plan controlled residential developments of ten units or less are no longer, are exempt from site plan control under the planning act. So again, it moves that authority essentially to your chief building official. And you know, recently had a meeting with Arnie and we're sort of talking about how we're going to do that. So we can still try to ensure that those, those key things like garbage pickup and driveways and landscaping areas are still covered through that building permit process, even though there isn't an agreement registered against the property anymore. And then the last one I would just highlight is that the minister now has the authority to, without any process to amend your official plan. So that is something that in the past was not, not permitted. Next slide, please. And then there are a number of changes related to parkland dedications and, and it sort of shifts from municipalities having the authority to decide where parkland is. It shifts it to developers proposing to municipalities where it is going to be. And then there's an appeal mechanism if there's not an agreement on that. And the final item, which is a county council authority for plans of subdivision, is the requirement for public meetings for a plan of subdivision has been removed. So again, we're going to have to wrestle with that procedurally, whether in most cases, there is still a zoning by law amendment associated with plan of subdivision. So there's still be a public meeting and a chance for neighbors to have input. If there wasn't, in the rare circumstance, my recommendation might still be to have a public information meeting or some sort of session. But we'll have to look at that more carefully. Next slide. So a number of twenty-nine of the larger urban centers within the, within Ontario were, were given housing targets. And those municipalities in the coming months, as I understand it, have to make a housing pledge to the province to how they're going to achieve those targets. Doesn't apply to Middlesex County. Of course, we are looking and Abby's going to, is working on the math to sort of look at what those averages are and then comparing how much development we're able to accommodate and how we're doing in those. I think so far we're, I think Middlesex County is actually probably hitting above our weight. If that's the right term, but we're going to, we're going to look at that a little bit. In the greater golden horseshoe, the minister is taking back the approval authority for many planning instruments and removing upper tier planning from regions and from the county of Simcoe, which effectively is, is a region. That's a significant change. And then there are some changes around land lease in terms of the planning acts and those technicalities that will allow those types of forms of housing without planning approval for a longer time period. And then a number of changes to other pieces of legislation. Maybe the only one I would highlight on this page is just the Ontario Wetland Evaluation System. This is one of those items that's out for consultation. And again, coupled with the conservation authority changes, it would probably, if implemented, would be a significant change in the way that natural heritage features are examined and protected within Ontario. And then the final one is just the building code. There are a number of changes. Some are in already, some are coming and being consulted on. So your local chief building officials will, will be on top of that. Next slide, please. So implications for the county. Official plan amendment number three, we recall that county council in previous term adopted amendment number three. We spent a lot of time, I believe, bringing the document into compliance with all the provincial direction of that time. We don't yet know when the province is going to restart that review. I, I am starting to see a bit of light at the end of the tunnel. I think that in the, in the coming months, we'll have more clarity on that. But at that's point, that is still on, on pause. Regardless, I, I think we're going to have to amend the county's fish plan again in the coming year, Abby. And we'll, we'll examine that with the planning advisory committee and sort of what that looks like. But until we have some more direction for the province on the P P S, place to grow, I think it'd be premature to sort of start that. Of course, and there's a trickle down effect for, for local official plans. And then the review, we're going to have to review the programs that the C A's are involved with. You know, for instance, we have a lot, many, many plans of subdivision that require clearance from the conservation authorities for various technical things. If, if their role changes, we're going to have to examine all of those and decide how, how we're going to figure that out. And then the last one, it's still not clear to me at least. Great program or stewardship programs like the clean water program and the conservation authorities do other things in the county that the county supports through the budget process. And whether that will still be an option for municipalities to voluntarily partner with C A's or how that is going to work. The next slide goes over some of the implications at a high level for the local municipalities. And as I said, I think we're trying to keep your C A Os and other staff involved. In particular, the, the development charges will be one of the main things that, that we're going to have to, that municipalities are going to have to work on. And then just some of the other changes and how site plans are dealt with, how zoning by laws are dealt with. And the previous legislative changes with regards to, which aren't on the slide, but refunding fees where applications are not dealt with in a, in a, in a timeline specified in the act. All of those provisions kick in in January. There was talk about a six month delay in that, that hasn't happened to the best of our knowledge. And so we've obviously got to move on that. And I think the last few, oh yeah, and then password Warwick, a letter was provided that highlighted four items. And including support in general for the A M O position that was forwarded to the province. So and then we are working on, there are some of those E R O postings where we're able to provide sort of technical advice. And our lens that we're taking to that as staff is to, we're just basically taking the county's official plan of member three, which was just dealt with by county council and sort of using those words and those policy directions and forwarding that on behalf of the county. So the last couple of slides are just some links to various E R O postings, but I'd be happy to answer any questions, Madam Warden.
Okay, thank you very much, Dirk. And certainly thanks, Abby, for doing all the heavy lifting on putting everything together. So. Questions or comments on the report that has just been presented? Again, lots of information to unpack. Counselor Brennan.
Madam Warden to Dirk. Have we heard anything about the minister unfreezing official plans and when things are going to start moving forward?
The, the short answer is nothing official. I've been talking, I talked to the ministry staff as recently as yesterday. And they tell me that they think in the next couple of months, so this winter. But there are other, I think I was worried, there are other priorities ahead of us in the G T A. And they are starting to make decisions. They approved Ottawa, Hamilton. They, they are starting to work on some of those larger documents. But I think we're a couple of months away at least.
Any other comments? Concerns? Discussion points? Okay, well, seeing none, then I would ask for a mover and a seconder to receive Dirk's report and attachments for information. My Counselor McGuire and Counselor Smibert. All in favor? And that's carried. Moving on to action items, we've got a bridge replacement report in front of us. And so Chris, turn it over to you.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Warden. These are both fairly similar reports. This is the first step of the process for replacement of two. This one is for a structure intent center on Nysary Road, just north of Dundas Street, crossing the Wabeno Creek. This bridge is experiencing some premature deterioration on one of the exterior beams. So we've highlighted this is in need of replacement. It will, the design proposals will include an environmental assessment as well as consideration of number of replacement alternatives. And essentially get us to a point where this structure will be ready to go up to tender, hopefully near the end of next year for anticipated construction start in two thousand and twenty-four. We had six submissions. These were evaluated as per the evaluation criteria for our R F Ps. And these proposals submitted by B M Ross is being recommended for acceptance. B M Ross has worked in the county, although not directly for the county in the past, but we certainly expect them to be able to do an excellent job on this project and I'm recommending that their proposal be accepted.
Okay, thanks, Chris. Questions on the project? Counselor Rob?
Thank you through the warden to Chris. Chris, if it's the bridge, I think it is, would this be a, I know it's very early, it started the process, but is it a possibility of being like a box culvert replacement or something like that? Or is it too large for that?
Yeah, through the warden to Counselor Rob, probably not a great candidate for a box culvert. Just the Wabeno Creek is, is a fairly significant water course. It is a two span bridge with a central pier. Although saying that, we certainly will be looking at alternatives, including composite deck installation similar to what we did on Hybray Ave, a more of a rapid bridge replacement type project. But again, it's too early in the process to have gone through those design evaluations and any great detail, so.
Any other comments? Okay, so you've got the motion in front of you to enter into the agreement with B M Ross. If I can get a mover and a seconder for that, please. Counselor Grantham and Counselor McMillan. All in favor? And that is carried. And as Chris said, this is similar, but I'll let you walk through the details in this one, Chris.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Warden. This is a bridge on Pike Road in the Municipally Valley Metcalf. Again, this is a section of road that was assumed by the county in a recent county road assumption study. And certainly we're seeing deterioration of this. It's an open grate steel bridge. Again, now it's seeing heavier traffic loads, seeing a heck of a lot more salt in the winter time. Although we don't salt an open bridge, but again, just seeing more tracking of salt in different corrosive materials. So we're seeing deterioration of this bridge and certainly would not be suitable for the county as far as a bridge structure on an arterial road, which is a classification of Pike Road. Pike Road itself is scheduled for construction over the next number of years. This section of Pike Road is likely going to happen in two thousand and twenty-four, two thousand and twenty-five. So the timeline for this bridge replacement project is in line with the remainder of the road reconstruction schedule in an attempt to minimize the disruption to the residents. We had two submissions for this one. B T Engineering ranked higher in the evaluation of the two proposals. Again, B T Engineering hasn't worked in Middlesex County previously, but we've checked their references and we anticipate they can complete this project as prescribed in the R F P document. And I'm recommending that we enter an agreement with B T Engineering for this job.
Thanks again, Chris. Comments on this report and Counselor Grantham?
Yeah, thank you, Warden. Through you to the engineer. Not specifically on the bridge, but I wonder if the engineer could speak more on the Pike Road reconstruction. It's the first I've heard about. It's a little bit of background may help me.
Did I lose my mic? No, there it is. Okay, through, excuse me, through the warden to Counselor Grantham. So Middlesex County included the Pike Road Molliferry Drive reconstruction. Again, we assume Pike Road and Molliferry Drive from the Municipally Valley Metcalf. In our previous county road assumption study, we're seeing, we have seen an increase in traffic, especially truck traffic along that section of roadway over the last ten years. So we've put this road into our program for reconstruction. We're actually going to do the reconstruction as proposed as part of our capital program. Molliferry Drive from Center Road to Pike Road and Pike Road from Molliferry Drive to the area just north of Naperton. Again, we're going to stay out of the area where it's densely populated. So just stopping just north of the residential area. And this is through our typical road reconstruction program. It will be completed in-house. We've had the design completed and we actually had a public meeting in November, spoke to some residents about the program. The Pike Road Bridge is actually on the piece that's south of Naperton Drive. So the piece of Pike Road between Naperton and Melbourne Road. That section will go later on in the process. We're actually talking a little bit about having that bridge project go in conjunction with a road reconstruction happening at the same time in the same year, which is why we're doing the bridge design now and hopes that we can do all of that work in a, in a single project. Again, we're mindful of the fact that these roads would have to be closed through traffic. So we're making sure we do this in logical order. So we don't land lock any residents for one, but two, don't divert traffic such that it creates an extended nuisance for people on other alternative roads like Victoria Street, Caradoc Street and such. So that's, that's the proposal. It, it's going to be included in my capital budget for two thousand and twenty-three. And just for information, new councillors, two thousand and twenty-three is another year for an update to our five-year draft capital program. So you'll be seeing that presented to you in the fall of two thousand and twenty-three in coordination with the local public works officials. We'll get together over the summer and look at our next five-year programs to make sure we align in case there's any pending infrastructure work in any of the urban areas across Middlesex. uh, pending infrastructure work in any of the urban areas across Middlesex County.
Thank you.
Any other questions or clarifications? All right, then you do have the, um, motion in front of you to, oh, sorry, councillor Clark.
Sorry, I just wanted to add that, um, uh, your department, Chris, did a great job at the open house. Uh, we had to relocate it in the last moment, but, uh, it was extremely well attended by the ratepayers on that road. And I think they really appreciated the chance and the opportunity to give input, even with respect to how many trees they were going to lose or how many they were going to keep. So thank your department very much for their comprehensive and, uh, welcoming approach in the community.
Okay, with that, um, you've got the recommendation in front of you to authorize um, the county engineer to enter into an agreement with BT Engineering. Um, so can I get a mover and a seconder for that, please? Councillor Mayhew and a seconder councillor Clark. All in favor? And that's carried. Hey, Mercy, you've got a lot of reports today. Usually you don't have this many. Uh, rules of procedure by law review.
Awesome, thanks. So we go to the next slide, Paul. So the existing rules of procedure by law number fifty-nine sixty-eight was passed in two thousand and seven. It was amended three times during COVID nineteen to reflect changes to the municipal act, including the introduction of electronic meetings. It was also amended last Thursday at our inaugural meeting to deal with the election of the deputy warden and our committee appointment process. Today we are recommending, uh, repeal and replace of bylaw number fifty-nine sixty-eight to consolidate all of these amendments and to reflect the evolution of county procedures since two thousand and seven. Uh, so I won't go into too much detail about this slide because we just talked about it, uh, but the proposed bylaw maintains that the deputy warden is the most immediate past warden. And if there is no immediate past warden, it states the deputy warden may be elected. The bylaw also expands a bit on the duties of the deputy warden. It states that the deputy warden will act where the warden is unable or refuses to act. And also that the deputy warden will assist the warden with his or her duties, um, and that assistance is at the discretion of the warden. In addition to those changes, we've also updated the agenda format. Uh, the format set out in the existing bylaw does not reflect the committee of the whole structure that we have been using for some time now. Um, in that structure, business is considered by the committee of the whole first, as opposed to going to a standing committee or directly to council. Uh, the committee of the whole then makes recommendations which are considered by council at its next regular meeting. There are some exceptions to this, such as when a matter is urgent or time sensitive, in which case it may go directly to council for consideration. And the benefits to this structure are that council can consider and debate matters in the committee of the whole, where some of the rules of debate are relaxed. And it also gives council the opportunity for sober second thought. Uh, with respect to inquiries, we've added some more details around this process. This is something that was raised during the last term of council and something that some of our local municipalities were considering. So the inquiry section of the agenda provides councillors with an opportunity to ask staff questions about county business or to request a staff report on an item. We've incorporated a bit of process around this by recommending that councillors submit their inquiries in writing to the clerk at least twenty-four hours in advance of the meeting. Uh, this is a model used by other municipalities with great success and provide staff with an opportunity to, to prepare a quality response. Uh, in terms of committees, we've added the new committee appointment process, uh, passed on Thursday. And in addition to these changes, we've also added some details around the process to be used when establishing committees and the procedures to be used in committees, uh, including the requirement to have a terms of reference for all committees of council. And finally, we have the addition of a section specific to the Strathmere Lodge Committee of Management. This section confirms that all of council is the committee of management. And when acting as such, has all the powers and responsibilities set out in the fixing long-term care home act. So our recommendation is that this report be received for information and that a new bylaw, um, which is appended to the report be introduced at the January seventeenth, twenty twenty-two meeting of council.
Okay, thanks, Mercy. Um, any comments on this? Certainly have also, as Mercy said, um, it'll be brought back to council in January. So you've got time to review it still. Um, but if there was anything that you noticed, this would be a good time to make a comment. Okay, seeing none, then, uh, you've got the motion in front of you. Um, and I would ask for a mover and a seconder for that, please. Councillor DeVet and a seconder councillor McGuire. All in favor? And that's carried. Okay, Cindy. Budget twenty twenty-three timetable.
Thanks. And through the warden, um, attached is the timetable for the twenty twenty-three budget. Bill's already touched on a number of these dates already. Uh, the proposed timetable is consistent with previous years. And dates work around conferences that council members attend. Example, uh, Roma. I will work with the warden and the budget committee, which just announced today, to set dates in late January and February. Um, county council will receive the budget March fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-three. At this time, I recommend you approve the timetable. Sorry, it's a short report today.
Yes, this is one of your shorter reports, Cindy.
Yes, and no real numbers.
No, no, exactly. Um, any concerns on the timetable that's been presented? Then I would ask for a mover and a seconder for the motion in front of you. Councillor Smybert and councillor Grantham. And all in favor? And that's carried. Okay, correspondence and information items. Um, so I'm not going to read all of the items eleven C one to eleven C ten. Um, for those watching us online, you can find the details of those on our agenda. But those are all the list of the payables. I would ask, um, council before I ask for a mover and a seconder, were there any uh, questions on any of those payables? And seeing none, I would ask for a mover and a seconder to receive those items for information. Councillor McGuire and councillor McMillan. All in favor? It's carried. Then on to the correspondence items. I will go through these in case somebody wants to pull one. So, uh, AMO policy update, unpacking Bill twenty-three. Adelaide Metcalf notice of passing of development charges by law. Middlesex County receives Ontario Tourism Resiliency Award. Kara, I might put you on the spot right now just to speak to that. I didn't, I didn't give you the heads up, but this is a good news story. Great, thanks, Kara. Um, moving on, the notice from Enbridge Gas. The Board of Health monthly meeting update for November twenty twenty-two. Four Counties Health Services Foundation Fall twenty twenty-two newsletter. AMO policy update, province responds to AMO calls for municipal funding. Notice of changes under the Oil, Gas and Salt Resources Act related to geological carbon storage. AMO update or policy update, standing committee appearance on Bill thirty-nine. Strathmere Lodge census report for October twenty twenty-two. Strathmere Lodge census report for November twenty twenty-two. And the October budget variance report. Can I get a mover and a seconder to receive those items for information, please? Councillor Smybert and a seconder councillor DeVet. All in favor? And that's carried. Are there any inquiries? Any new business? Any announcements? So you've got in front of us, uh, the, um, what the next meeting dates look like. So at this time, uh, the next time we meet will be January seventeenth. This wasn't a too bad of a first meeting, introduction to Middlesex County Council. Um, but I will take this opportunity to, uh, wish our residents um, and our councils, um, this council around the horseshoe and of course our staff, a very merry Christmas. Um, all the best for twenty twenty-three. Um, and we wish you nothing but a happy, healthy and meaningful holiday season. With that, I would ask for a mover and a seconder to adjourn us at two forty-one. Councillor Grantham and councillor McGuire. All in favor? And that's Carrie. Thank you very much. See you.